Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,207th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and City Council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary Platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commissioner's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Sure. Mr. Bonjero is here. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mrs. D'Naro is absent tonight. Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Mr. Caremagna is also absent. Chairman Willsaw?
Is here. Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Bonjero filling in for the Secretary's duties tonight. You'll get a little bit more action here in just a minute. For the folks in our audience, the way the format of this meeting is run is we'll call each of the items that are on our agenda. We will then go to our planning staff to give background information on those items, and then we'll ask that the petitioners come forward and speak to their item. We may have some questions for you, and then anyone else, any audience who wishes to speak for or against these items, may also come forward after that. I also do want to make sure that we note that we also have with our meeting tonight our planning staff. We have Mark Toramina, we have Jacob Uhazi, and we have Stephanie Reese. And they're all from our planning staff, and they'll be assisting us with the meeting tonight. So with that, we are going to start with item number one on our public hearing agenda item, which has been, this is an item from Skilken Gold, which is for a rezoning, and that item is being rescheduled because it did not meet the requirements for this meeting tonight. So that will be seen at a future meeting, anyone who's interested in that item. So we'll move on to item number two. Mr. Secretary.
Petition 2023-11-02-14 submitted by Rental Equipment Solutions requesting waiver use approval under Section 6.58 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended to operate a construction equipment rental business with outdoor storage at 34147 Schoolcraft Road, located on the south side of Schoolcraft Road between Stark Road and Ashhurst Court in the northeast quarter of Section 28.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. This proposal to operate a construction equipment rental business with outdoor storage is at 34147 Schoolcraft Road, which as you can see from the map is on the south side of the road just west of Stark. This property is approximately eight tenths of an acre in size. It includes 114 feet of frontage on Schoolcraft Road. The depth of the property is 326 feet. The zoning is M1 light manufacturing with industrial uses surrounding the property. The site presently contains a one-story building that's about 10,000 square feet in size. It's located near the front of the property, adjacent to Schoolcraft Road. The rear portion of the property, the rear 125 feet, is hard-surfaced and fenced. Special trade contractors where vehicles, trailers, equipment, and other materials are not wholly enclosed within a building do require waiver use approval, and this is the reason that this item is before you this evening. Rental Equipment Solutions rents general construction equipment. This includes aerial lifts, material handling equipment such as scissor lifts, telescopic boom lifts, and forklifts. Their primary customers are contractors. They also service residential customers but at a lower volume. Most of the equipment is delivered to the job site with a small portion of the equipment being picked up from this location. The yard behind the building is fenced. The access is restricted both to the, on the east side of the building and on the west side of the building. There are gates that would control access to the area, so the storage equipment would be, the equipment in the storage yard would be fully enclosed. Most of the equipment would be parked along this, the site's rear property line. Employees would move and retrieve the equipment. 24-foot aisleways are provided between the rows of equipment to allow for maneuverability. There is a requirement for 10 parking spaces on the site. It currently has 18 parking spaces, so there's 14 parking spaces along the west side of the building. There's an additional four spaces on the front of the building. Petitioners provided an interior layout of the building, which is primarily broken down between warehouses, showrooms, and an office space. There are no proposed improvements to the building other than some interior modifications, but no exterior changes to the building are proposed. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence on this item.
Yes, please.
First item is from our Engineering Division. It's dated November 20th, and it reads, "The subject parcel is assigned the address of 34147 through 34171 Schoolcraft Road with the address of 34147 being assigned to the overall parcel. The legal description included with the submitted drawings appears to be correct and should be used in conjunction with this project should the waiver use be approved. Number three, the existing parcel was currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer, Water Main, and Storm Sewer. The submitted drawings do not show any changes to the existing services to the building, so we do not believe there will be any negative impacts to the system with the proposed usages. Four, any work within the Schoolcraft Road right-of-way will require permitting through the City of Livonia's Engineering Department, and that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer." Next, we have a letter from our Fire Division dated December 7th that reads, "This office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the request to use a commercial building on the property located at the above-referenced address. We have no objections to this proposal with the following stipulations. Number one, access around the entire building must be maintained for the use of emergency vehicles. Equipment stored outside cannot create an obstruction slash barrier. Number two, equipment stored indoors cannot block access to electrical or mechanical rooms or panels. Three, exit doors cannot be blocked by stored equipment. And four, if perimeter gate has electronic access, provisions are required for immediate emergency vehicle access. A further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set." That letter signed by Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Office of, or excuse me, the Division of Police, Department of Public Safety. That letter is dated December, or excuse me, November 20th, and signed by Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter from the Inspection Department dated December 13th that reads, "The parking lot is in disrepair and shall be repaired or replaced as necessary. Number two, parking spaces shall be 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep and double striped. And three, an enclosure of sufficient height to completely screen the dumpster is required on three sides of the waste receptacle with a solid gate on the fourth side. The height of the enclosure must not be less than six feet or at least one foot above the height of the dumpster, whichever is greater. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, and when not in use, closed at all times. The enclosure must be constructed of the same or compatible material and colors of the principal building in terms of texture and quality. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah. Next is a letter from our Department of Finance dated December 12th, wherein they indicate that there are unpaid water charges in the amount of $106.86. That comes from Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. We do know that payment has been received for that outstanding balance. And then lastly, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Office of Treasure dated November 20th and signed by Linda Sheel, Treasurer of the City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? I don't see any questions. Our petitioner is in the audience. If you'd like to come to one of our podiums here, you can introduce yourself. We ask that you start with your name and address.
Hi, my name's Matt Hall with Rental Solutions. Our operating address or first?
Operating's fine.
Operating. It's 34147 Schoolcraft Road, Livonia, 48150.
Thank you, sir. And is there anything else that you'd like to tell us about your proposal?
I think Mark did a great job of speaking to what we plan to do with the building and the space. I don't have anything incredibly detailed to add to that unless there's additional questions I can speak to for you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hall. Mr. Toramina does have a tendency to steal people's thunder, so he does a good job.
Oh, in the interest of time, Mr. Chairman.
Exactly. Well, let's just see if there's any questions for our petitioner. Any questions for Mr. Hall? I don't see any questions from any of our commissioners. Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask a question. Mr. Hall, during the study session, we noted that the pavement around the building was in poor condition, and you were going to go back to the landlord and see if you could get him to rectify that situation, if you've been successful in being able to do that.
Correct. We have reached back out to our landlord, who I believe is actually here, right? We are, and we do plan to have that work done. The details of that, we don't have actual dates yet or anything. There's, obviously, we can't do asphalt in the wintertime, but...
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
But we do have plans to repair it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Ventura. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't hear any other questions. Mr. Hall, just a quick question from me. In regards to your rental operations, is there any intention to have rental vehicles at any point in the future?
At this point, I would say no. We've been sticking to, you know, equipment primarily.
Okay, because I know that U-Haul and those types of things tend to align sometimes with these types of businesses, so I wasn't sure if you were considering that in the future. And then your delivery trucks or vehicles that deliver the equipment, how many of those do you have?
Currently, we actually only own one. It's like an F-250 pickup truck with a little trailer behind it. A lot of our delivery is actually outsourced to third parties.
Okay. All right, good to know. So you won't really have, you'll just have the one vehicle that you'll be storing on the property after hours.
We could be expanding in the future to get a larger, like, rollback truck for delivery of larger equipment rather than continuing to outsource, but that's, would be, you know, a bit down the road at least.
Okay. And if you do have additional delivery vehicles, you would intend to probably store those in the back secured area?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, that's the only questions I had. Again, if there's any other questions from any of our commissioners, I don't see any other questions. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anybody rushing forward. So is there anything else that you'd like to tell us, Mr. Hall, before we make our decision?
No, I think it should be that.
Okay, I think we've covered all our bases. I'll close the public hearing, and a motion will be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Okay.
At the request to operate a construction equipment rental business with outdoor storage at 34147 Schoolcraft Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and following conditions. Number one, that the outdoor storage of all construction equipment shall be limited to the fenced-in area behind the building and shall be maintained in an orderly manner. Number two, that the site's pavement areas, including the rear storage lot and parking lot, shall be repaired and resealed as necessary to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department. Parking spaces shall be appropriately sized and double striped, including any barrier-free spaces as may be required by the State of Michigan. That there should be no outdoor storage of disabled or inoperative equipment and vehicles, scrap material, debris, or similar items. Number four, there should be no storage of flammable, explosive, radioactive, hazardous, toxics, or volatile substances within the building or upon the premises. Number five, this waiver use is granted to this petitioner only, and any new user of this property is required to seek and receive City Council's consent to such users operating in subject facility prior to occupancy by such user. Number six, unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. Number seven, that any facilities for the outdoor storage of refuse shall be screened by means of an enclosure constructed of masonry walls with solid metal enclosure gates. If no outside dumpster is located on the site, all trash must be contained within the building except on the day trash is scheduled for removal. Number eight, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And number nine, pursuant to Section 13.13 of Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion made by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toramina?
If the maker of the motion would consider a possible change to item number six, to include the term rental equipment along with the list of other items regarding advertising, that, you know, this, we've had these businesses in the past where they have a tendency to raise the...
Stick a machine out front.
Stick, well, scissor lifts go high up in the air with the sign, so...
Yeah, yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, the maker's fine with it, the supporter's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments on the motion? If there's no other comments on the motion, again, this is a motion to approve. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero votes aye. Chairman Willsaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council with an approving recommendation. We wish you luck with your business. Thank you for coming tonight. That takes care of the public hearing section of our agenda. We do have one item on the miscellaneous item section of our agenda. Item number three.
Petition 2023-11-08-08 submitted by S&amp;Z Restaurants LLC requesting approval of all plans required by Sections 3.11 and 1.3.13 of Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended in connection with a proposal to add a second drive-through lane at Culver's Restaurant at 13030 Middle Belt Road located on the east side of Middle Belt Road between the CSX Railroad right-of-way and Schoolcraft Road in the northwest quarter of Section 25.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. As indicated, this is a request by Culver's Restaurant to add a second drive-through lane. Culver's is at Millennium Park on the east side of Middle Belt Road. The zoning of the property is C2 General Business. This site is one and a half acres in size. Culver's was approved in 2013. The development includes a one-story restaurant with a gross floor area of about 4,500 square feet. There's seating for 131 customers, including 119 interior seats and 12 outdoor patio seats. The building, as you can see from the aerial photograph, is positioned towards the east side of the property. The west half of the site contains parking and a 73-foot-wide lawn area. Access to the site is from Millennium Drive to the north as well as the Meyer parking lot to the south. Drive-up window service is located on the east side of the building. Currently, there is a single lane that serves the drive-up window. That lane commences on the south side of the building and then loops around to the window on the east side. In order to accommodate the second drive-through lane, the area just south of the building would be reconfigured. This would be done by moving the existing lane closer to the building. It also requires relocating the dumpster enclosure to the west side of the parking lot. There is a bypass lane currently along the south side. It's that bypass lane that would be converted to the second drive-through lane, and then a small landscape aisle would be created between the two lanes. Beyond the ordering station, these two lanes, as you can see, would converge to form a single drive aisle. The plan does show sufficient stacking for both traffic lanes. There's a requirement that the lanes be at least 10 feet in width. This plan complies with that requirement. Drive-up establishments must also provide a bypass lane, but as I indicated with this reconfiguration, they're eliminating the existing bypass lane, converting that to a drive-through lane, so the bypass lane will no longer be available at this location. The new dumpster would be placed in the southwest corner of the parking lot. The walls would have to be constructed out of poor concrete or a material to match the brick pattern on the building. The second drive-through lane does not affect the site's parking count or layout. No parking spaces are located within the area where the proposed additional lane would be installed, and there are no renovations proposed to either the building or the landscaping around the building or the site. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll read the correspondence out.
Yes, please.
A letter from the Engineering Department dated December 4th that reads, "The subject parcel is assigned the address of 13030 Middle Belt Road. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer and Water Main as well as private storm sewer. The submitted drawings do not show any changes to the existing services to the building, so we do not believe there will be any negative impacts to the system with the proposed usages." Number three, should any revisions to the onsite be required, the owner will need to submit engineering drawings to this department to determine if permits will be required. That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. We have a letter of no objection coming from the Department of Public Safety, Livonia Fire and Rescue. That letter is dated December 7th and signed by Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. Another letter of no objection coming from the Traffic Bureau, signed by Paul Walters, and dated December 4. Letter from the Inspection Department dated December 13th that reads, "A bypass lane is not shown on the proposed plan. A waiver from council would be required to eliminate the bypass lane. And two, any proposed signage that does not meet the ordinance would require a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This department has no further objections to this petition." That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. We have a letter from our Department of Finance indicating unpaid miscellaneous billing charges annual-by-annual inspections. That total amount due to the city is $100. That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant for the city. And then lastly, a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasury dated December 4th and signed by Linda Sheel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Ventura?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Toramina, during our study session, we talked about the bypass lane, and you made the statement that the bypass lane does not function in any way or fulfill a requirement by the Fire Department for fire safety reasons. Is that true?
It's not indicated by, in their letter, so I'm, I don't believe that they have any objection to this design. In looking at it, I'm guessing that they felt that they had sufficient access around the building for fire safety purposes.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioners in the audience, feel free to come to our podium, introduce yourself, and let us know what you want to do.
Andrew Zalki, S&amp;Z Restaurants, 13030 Middle Belt Road, Livonia, Michigan. Looking to add an additional drive-through lane to our existing Culver's at 130030 Middle Belt Road. That's pretty much it. I mean, Mark already pretty much explained it. This is what we're doing.
Okay. Let's see if we have any questions from any of our commissioners for you. Are there any questions from Mr. Zalki, Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Zalki, the elimination of the existing bypass lane won't affect the parking count, but it will, in practice, it will kind of eliminate those, I don't know, maybe five or six north, parking spaces, angle parking spaces on the northeast corner. During peak hours, is that going to be any kind of a problem? Do you foresee any problem with them not really being...
Not really right offhand, because like I said, our business has shifted more towards the drive-through, and it's probably opened up more, you know, parking outside of that. And I think there's 15 spaces along that one side, and, you know, probably more than a half of them will be used as order waiting, and there's probably like four or five or six maybe left that are, could be used if an employee was able to get around or whatever. You know, we've encouraged that, just to have that over on that side, but for the most part, you know, there's really that, not really anybody that parks over there anyways at this point.
Certainly. I mean, you know, an employee coming, as long as there was no cars there, considering my park there, but if you were...
Exactly, correct, yeah. Or if they wanted to wait, you know, a couple of minutes and pull through.
Yeah, if you were rushed. And rest, like you said, the ones further, I guess, further north, right? It was the southeast ones that would be eliminated.
Yeah.
I said northeast, but it's the southeast that'd be eliminated.
Correct, yep.
Yeah. Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from the commission. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak on this item? No one's wishing to speak on this item. Mr. Zalki, I did have, I did have one question for you, and it was in regards to the, to the signage. Was there any additional signage that you were going to be...
Proposing to put up?
Yeah.
The additional signage would be this menu board, if you guys consider that additional signage, but for the most part, building signs or any type of, you know, Culver's signs, there's not going to be any of that.
Okay, but you weren't going to have any additional advertising-type signs, right?
No, no, no.
And then Mr. Toramina is showing us you did have a canopy that's going to be over each of the ordering stations as well, right?
Over the ordering speaker post, yes. You know, it's kind of the, you know, a new canopy update and make it look better than what it is now with just a, you know, metal box sticking on the ground.
Sure, yeah, I think it's very attractive.
Yeah.
All right, good. I just wanted to ask that. I don't think there's any other questions from any of our commissioners. I think there's no one in our audience wishing to speak, so we'll leave you with the last word. Is there anything else you'd like to let us know before we make our decision?
No, it's pretty straightforward, so...
That's very good, thank you.
Oh, yeah, one other thing. There's a $100 bill or something like that that was outstanding for a building inspection that's been paid, so...
Okay. All right, good.
From Connie or whatever, so...
That's something that our, this moves to City Council, they definitely like to make sure that any outstanding bills have been paid. We won't hold you up for that if there's any concern.
Yeah, the way Scott sent an email to me, I thought was going to hold up, so, but I didn't, you know, until I called and clarified that.
But you got it all cleared up?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I will look to our commission and then for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long?
I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to add a second drive-through lane at the Culver's Restaurant at 13030 Middle Belt Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan identified as Option 3 dated November 3, 2023, prepared by Culver Franchising Systems LLC is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the required bypass lane may be omitted only if this requirement is waived by City Council by means of a separate resolution by which two-thirds of the members of the City Council concur. Number three, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building, and the enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. And number four, pursuant to Section 13.13 of Livonia's Zoning Ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless a permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Ventura, to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if our Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Donjero?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero is aye. Chairman Willsaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes, and that will go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Thank you for coming tonight. And we have one item left on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
The approval of the minutes of the 1,206th public hearings and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on November 14, 2023.
All right, is there a motion to approve those?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion by Ventura, supported by Long, to approve that. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show four on approving that. I see no objections from anyone, so we'll mark that approved. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business that come before the council this evening? If there is nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Bonjero. Give him credit for that. That's on the adjourning motion. And again, if there's no objections, we can safely show four to adjourn the meeting. And again, if there's no objections, we can safely show four to adjourn the meeting. This is the last meeting of the year. I do want to thank my colleagues and our planning staff for their efforts this year. We've had a lot of meetings, a lot of hard work, and I do appreciate that. And I do want to wish everyone in the community, and of course, my colleagues, a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year coming up. We'll see you again next year, and we will be adjourning the meeting tonight at 7:30 PM, and wish a good night and happy holidays to Livonia.